Okay, we'll bring the Planning Commission meeting for March first to order. And the first call of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then, um, there's, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda. Somebody wants to add something?
I'm moved that we adopt the agenda.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Then, we have Planning Commission minutes from December seventh. And I just had a couple of things. Yep. One of which has to do with my name.
Oh.
So, I'm a Michelle with one L.
Oh, did I get that wrong somewhere?
Well, you did it kinda two, two ways. So, in the number one, you were hedging your bets, I know it.
Ah.
Planning Commission Chair Michelle, that should just be one.
Gotcha.
So, we have that. And then, on page, what would be two?
Yep.
Down in that last paragraph where it's talking, it's A-K-O-N-A. There's no L, it's A-K-O-N-A.
Oh, yep, typo on my part.
Yep. Otherwise, pretty much, that was all I had.
Alright.
Anything else from peoples?
Nope, looked good to me, so I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from December seventh.
My second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Alrighty. Now, we have new business and there's like three public hearings. We have no one. Do we open each one and close it?
Mm-hmm.
Should I open all three of them and close them and then talk about all of them? But, okay, do one, alright. So, the first-
So, we can, I mean, I think, don't we usually do discussion and then open it?
Usually, we'll do a little presentation.
Yeah, when I, when people are here, I tell them that staff-
Right.
-have some information. And then, I usually open it and they can say whatever they wanna say and we kinda go from there. So, staff, the first one has to do with signs, sign regulations.
Yes, so essentially, what we're looking for, probably see this more as a discussion tonight instead of a actual, or a change at this point. But, we are just looking for some direction on signage in regards to, one, should the design guidelines as far as signage be applied to mixed, all mixed-use industrial signs? Or just mixed use? There's a little discrepancy in the code as far as design guidelines are being mentioned in the industrial signage. But, the design guidelines were created for the mixed use. So, just a little clarification on that. And then, talking about internally, looking for feedback on internally lit signs in the city. And then, should we allow them in certain areas or just prohibit them altogether? Or, just discussion on that, so.
Okay.
I guess we can open and close a public hearing now.
Okay, then, I'll open the light, so I'll say six nine, six ten?
Six oh nine works.
Six oh nine, well, open and actually close, 'cause there is no one here.
That works.
And, um-
Just one point of reference to why this is here. That may be a question. So, this, I'm gonna just briefly talk a little bit about the internally lit signs. So, that's part of the downtown guidelines, that we do not prohibit internally lit signs. We like to push the backlit signs as much as possible. Part of the reason why this is here is that we've had a couple of requests from businesses in the downtown area that would like to have a internally lit, almost like box sign. So, this is somewhat common for a lot of, you know, commercial-type businesses, that they standardize signs through their business. And, since we've had a number of these requests, I know we've had conversations pertaining to, we've had a couple of variances within the last few years.
For, for, I forget where I meant.
Yep, for the Gordon James building that's there. We had Varian Insurance and another business that was able to get a variance, but all the variances pertain specifically to that building-
Yeah.
-that we did, that was approved and recommended for approval through Planning Commission and City Council. This is more of a general, should this component be a part of the downtown guidelines? Or should we remove it? And that's where we're up for your discussion and everyone's thoughts here for council.
The Maple Plain design guidelines actually were for any part of the city.
Okay.
And, and we know and recognize that, you know, for industrial places, there's, sometimes there aren't even signs, really. I mean, if you wanna do that. But, it was intended that it, that it kinda be for all of it. Obviously, the three main gateway type, you know, Highway twelve Bud type of thing out here. And then, downtown, but it was intended for that. And, and I'll, some history, I guess, part of the reason that we decided against the box-lit things, they're homely, for one thing. They break. Part of the sign is half-lit and the other half is lit, not lit, 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 you know, kinda thing. And, it was one of those things where it was very clear that it seemed that, you know, at one time, strip malls almost all had those kinds of things, you know, evidence of MPCF, you know, over there. And we wanted it to have a little bit more style, more class. And, so that's where we went to the, you know, the backlit type of thing. And I know that sometimes the bulbs burn out on the backlit, you know, liquor depot without the T is sometimes not lit. And, and to try to have businesspeople make something maybe a little bit, you know, more unique to their situation. I know that one of the things that we, each time that over by Blackwater and the building over there, that building was built before the design guidelines kind of put up without a whole lot of input by anybody. And, and so, we recognize always when we do something like design guidelines or we're looking at something saying, here's what we would like people to keep in their heads when they come in to develop in our area, is we know that there are some things where they come in and stuff is already there. And so, then they go, well, why can't we have that? Because they do, and now you're gonna make me do something different. Well, too bad. That's part of what you do thirty-year plans for, that's part of what you, you know, try and help. So, what we've done with the signs there is, instead of like boxes, like a lot of them wanted, what we've done is tried to make them, or have them, think of something where it's, there's pieces of it that are more individual. And they have done that. We recognize that that's something that's in place. But, at some point, part of this, or part of anybody's thinking is to say, here's what we would like the city to look like.
Sure.
And we want it to look a little bit more, have more character, have it be more uniform if we can do that. But, not have something that they put up and, you know, then the plastic ages and dies and, I don't know. So, that, when, when this gets brought up, I look at it as, there's a reason why we wanted things to start looking different. And so, you wanna do business in our town, then that's why we have all of these things.
Yeah, I think, I think part of the reason why, and I'm gonna try and, I'm gonna just give some feedback I've received from other businesses pertaining to this too, is that part of the reason why this is coming up as part of this conversation is just that we've had a number of either temporary signs being put up illegally or whatnot. And so, it's, we're looking at, okay, is there other avenues that could potentially help businesses with signage where it looks better than it is currently now? So, I truly understand that the downtown design guidelines that are for Maple Plain or the intention of them is that this is where we wanna be. I think over the last ten years since they've been in place, it's been somewhat successful. I mean, there's some businesses that have complied.
Yeah, we got, we got the hardware store to-
Yep.
-to do lighting and, and we worked with them on the big monument, you know, signs and things like that. And there are some things that we recognize that way. But, I, I have to be honest that any time that the businesspeople have come in, in my mind, lighting, parking, some of those kinds of things are like leftovers to them. It's like, ah, you know, I don't wanna really have to think about it. I know I have to do X, Y, Z. And, and then they come in too and they say, well, and, and the hardware store is an example where our corporate offices say that we should have this. Okay, let's work with them and us to create something that looks like what we want to have in this town. In my mind is like, you know, when they first started years back in talking about bringing big box whatevers, all the way down to McDonald's, into small towns. And McAdams is one of the things in my mind where, you know, the golden arches used to be like-
Mm-hmm.
-in the sky, you know, kinda thing. And they would go, corporate says that we have to have a sign that's fifty feet in the air. No, you can still have the golden arches. And what happened is towns started to say, no, that looks junky, it looks tacky, it doesn't fit the guidelines that we've put in place for that town. And, and if you want to work with us, it's not a leftover. All of those people at, at, at that corner have worked with us, including the last one that has, is it Varian Insurance or something like that?
Varian, Varian.
Varian, kinda thing. Be imaginative, sit down and think about it and not like a leftover, well, I wanna make this as easy and cheap, is usually what comes out of it too. So, I think that when I, when someone, I know that they have to work on signs. I don't see going to a box as being an interim to something that we want, 'cause it will never happen. So, if we tell them, here's what we want, here's what you need to do. And, and we can still work with them like we have with the Varian people and the people there. But, I think in, if we just said, well, it's whatever you want, then what is the point of a thirty-year plan? What's the point of this? What's the point of zoning? What's the point of any of it?
Yeah, and I don't think that's what we're, what we're looking at here in terms of looking at, why don't we have the, why do we have these plans and whatnot? You make excellent point, Michelle, in terms of, hey, these were put in place for a reason. I think primarily, the reason why we're having this discussion is that, is like I said, we've heard from a number of businesses, that's not necessarily what staff's advocating for is to make this change, but it's-
No, and I recognize that they're gonna come.
Sure.
The path of least resistance, less money. They also, I find, maybe I'll hold that comment. I think, I think they need, one of the things that I think is easy for, for people too is, there must be a book somewhere, and having worked in business, I know there is, must be a book somewhere that says, here's, here, here, your sign here. You know, so if you wanted to order something, here, go do this. They need to be more imaginative. And that usually means that you have to talk to somebody who knows how to do a sign or, well, what do you mean, be imaginative, what should we do? If, I mean, obviously, people have come before us for, you know, variances and for, you know, can we do it this way, that kinda thing? If it was a temporary thing because everything's gonna be torn down in a year's time and something brand-new and following, you know, the guidelines, we'd hear it out, but I don't want stuff that's permanent. And I know that there are, there are signs and things on the front of buildings that have gone up without anybody's permission, 'cause they just do it.
Yeah, and there's been, that's been a focal point of staff's lately, is to look at a lot of signage, whether it be temporary signage or the current signage of a number of businesses in town, and try and enforce our ordinances so that these businesses comply.
Yeah.
And that's not, that's just a tactic that one council has given direction to staff, just trying to create that image, that positive image. And it was out of those conversations that this is, this came up.
Yeah, and I think that us, meaning the city, and, and us, I guess, too, changing something just to always say, okay, yeah, whatever you wanna do, there is no point then in all the studies we've done, like I said, in all the things we've done. Would it be helpful to, you know, for these people that have issues or are trying to figure out to, you know, would they get together for, you know, an hour or half an hour or something during the day, all of them, you know, to say, to hear why we're doing this? I mean, I know they're hearing it from you.
Yep.
But, it also has to do with, I know that if they showed up in front of the Planning Commission, they're going to go through the same things that I've just said. You know, set when, when the liquor depot came, we were sitting there talking about colors even, about what color something should be. And I don't necessarily have to get into color, but Stefan's artistic and John had some ideas and, you know, we kinda went through and did stuff like that. But, if it's something, they're gonna end up hearing from us anyway and we're going to have to sit down and say, well, are we going to try and stick to as much of this as possible or not?
Yeah, and I think part of it is that it's not just new businesses, but existing businesses.
I know.
And you brought up a good point of just, you know, is there an opportunity to get as many businesses as possible in an afternoon and sit down and talk about these things? I think that's something that council's exploring, something like that. Not saying that's gonna happen, but it's a, it's been, been talked about to some way, how do we, how do we communicate with businesses in a different way?
Might give them an idea. I, I always, I think of things like this, it's kind of a weird way of thinking about it, but I think of it like, where I worked in when I was a manager and a supervisor, I had, once a year, what I called ground rules. And we'd sit down and you'd talk about, you know, what time you come to work and dress, all those kinds of things. I look at this as the same kinda thing. If they're sitting there, you know, as, get together, let's sit down and chat or whatever, and talk about, there are, for, in particular, for people who have been in the city but haven't done a whole lot, but now are being told, maybe you should start thinking about, they could put things into their financial plans for the future. The next time we go to do a sign, we have to look at this kinda thing or we have to think about, how would we like this to look? Or, here are the reasons why. Because part of it too is, they want people to come to their stores and, and they want more people to come, so kinda pull people in. And so, do something that's fun and attractive.
Sure.
But, I should shut up because I'm yelling.
Well, I would just say too that I think some of the guidelines that were made, were made for more small city. I think it would work in Long Lake, some of ours.
Sure.
But, is what we have is Highway twelve traffic. And until we can get rid of Highway twelve, which I keep pounding, we need to get rid of-
She does.
You know, if we could get rid of Highway twelve, I think that's what we want. But, I'm not sure that our guidelines right now fit our traffic pattern.
So, are you-
Because it is tough. When cars are going through here at forty and forty-five miles an hour, you need something that goes wow! You can't have something that's, ah, it's kinda cute, I think I'll go over there.
But, the lit, they, you know, when we were looking at backlit versus, or in comparison to box, whatever, it was the same, same amount of volts or whatever, lumens, all those kinds of things. And so, they're still going to see it. They're, they're going to be able to see it. I think that people equate, having looked at the way that some of the signs, in particular, when we got the other liquor store and there was competition, I think that they equate something that's, you know, forty by forty feet. They want something as big as possible to say, come here. And that's not really getting people in.
Well, you do have to get their attention.
Well, so many of our businesses are, that have stayed, have become, I think, like destination types of things. People know they're here, so that's why they're coming. And for somebody that's just going through and they see, oh, that looks like a grocery store, I've never been there, but it looks like a grocery store and I stop, I don't know that any particular sign is going to do it for them. But, I don't think that we stop looking at that either. And we know that there are variances and that there are people that have come and asked for something to, can we do this instead of that for X amount of time? So, they do know that that comes.
Is there, just to clarify, I totally agree with the box lights not looking very nice. I mean, they, like you said, they look cheap, the plastic wears out and all that. But, I think the internally lit ones that we approved recently look very nice. The letters, individual letters, and I think, you know, we saw in the design guidelines, Starbucks uses them, Caribou uses them. So, is there maybe a little bit in-between spot where we could allow internally lit on twelve? But, require that it can't be a box, maybe require that it has those individual shapes so that it stands out and looks more professional? I don't know if that would help the businesses at all or probably what they're looking for.
Yeah, I think it's, it's one of those things that, I don't know exactly if everything, each option is gonna help or not, but it's just showing more flexibility by the city, which is always a good gesture in that way. But, I certainly understand the design guidelines as well and the point that Michelle makes. Like I said previously, staff's not in here with a clear recommendation on which way to go, but more of just to get the temperature of Planning Commission and City Council pertaining to this issue, because it has, it's come up with businesses, so it's a-
Well, and it, and it could be if we look at, to your point, I'd have to, we'd have to think of how we would reword or do something or how would it, what would it say or why? And then, and then there's still a question of, okay, somebody can do it on Highway twelve, why can't I do it in downtown? So, we have to have that conversation to, is it the whole shoe and match? Or, or how do you word? I mean, I know we've always explained it to the people when they've come in, can you make the B be kind of like by itself? And the, there's, isn't there some kind of starry radiant thing in that?
Sure, individualized, you know, characters.
Yeah, and how, how do you word something like that?
Yeah.
And, and how do you, so I, you know-
I'm sure it could be done if that's what is, you know, if that's what the direction is, that we could word it.
Well, yes, and, and obviously, it can be because we know that people have done it on the signs. And so, it gives them one more option, we could maybe say that we would prefer X if you do whatever. But, it also would have to be a discussion about, would it apply to everything or just, you know, twelve? I'm, yeah, I would feel better if, if Barb and Stefan, you know, would be able to, to be there to kinda go through stuff.
Yeah, I did, I did get some feedback from Stefan today.
I could think, yeah.
And I can read it, what he said about signs. So, he said, from him, "I think it is important to keep the design guidelines as it is for downtown mixed-use area, at least for buildings that do not face Highway twelve. Actual visibility towards Highway twelve makes sense as long as it's tastefully done. But, for non-twelve facing buildings in the downtown, I would like to keep the quaint, small-town pedestrian-oriented look and feel. As for the gateway and Bud mixed-use areas are concerned, I think that backlit signs are fine, just not the big, big boxlit style signs. I recommend we retain the requirement for a sign package so the specifics can be reviewed and approved in detail." So, he-
Yeah, that doesn't surprise me.
That is what he thinks.
Well, so we could think about, and, and I think one of the questions that you had in here too was, do we continue to point back to the Maple Plain design guidelines? And I think the answer is yes.
So, for all areas, I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
'Cause that was kinda, but it also means then that as we go through and start clarifying some of this or if we add something to it, that then this gets updated as well.
Correct, yep.
So, that there was something and we'd have to look at-
What that looks like?
Um, yes, and I was thinking of this, if there's anything in here.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that we wouldn't have to amend.
Um, 'cause we, I know we reference, you know, back and forth, which is part of the reason that we did all of it. I think more of that kinda stuff has to do with, you know, I don't know why I can never think of the words for electrical things, lumens and-
Yeah.
All of that, to make sure that we're-
Well, yeah, what we would wanna do, looking at that, is just making sure that whatever sign, however that looks, if there is an internally lit sign, that we don't exceed the number of lumens that is currently allowed. That's a simple way of just saying, yeah, we're not gonna have you have a internally lit sign with letters that makes it look like it's neon, because it's so bright in there too.
And, and so, there would have to be a change of some of the wording. I know that neon signs are in there and that was a real purposeful conversation about why, why not them?
Sure.
I mean, I know, I know that they're better these days than, you know, even ten years ago, but they're like notorious for part of it and then nothing and then part and nothing, kinda thing. So, so in going through and, you know, looking at, at this as well to kinda start adding some language so that we can start looking at stuff, I think would be-
So, would you, you know, give, or would the Planning Commission give the direction of, you know, starting to draft something for consideration? We can talk about it again once we have words in front of us or-
Okay, alright, well, sure, at the time, I'm, at the time that this was done-
Yep.
And, and a lot of, any of the changes, and I'm, I'm open to anything, the Planning Commission and the design group did this. So, I don't know if, if, if you wanna do something and then it comes back to us that we look at it-
We can probably do that.
Yep, that's what, yep.
That's fine if you want us to, 'cause, well, obviously, we all have opinions, but it-
Just to get some concrete, something concrete in front of you.
To start comparing and, okay, yeah, alright, sure.
Yeah, no, I mean, no decision, we would, of course, have a discussion about it.
That makes sense, yep. So, yeah, we, yes, let's do that.
Okay.
So, we make that recommendation.
Alright, so we'll bring back something, talking about, you know, more of the individualized letters and then can discuss our options for, you know, where that would be allowed and not allowed.
Right.
And we can discuss that again. Um, and then can discuss our options for, you know, where that would be allowed and not allowed, and we can discuss that again.
A lot of, um, the things like, you know, can people have sandwich board signs and, and the temporary signs? I don't see much of that changing. That was hugely.
Sure.
Talked about and, and I'm, I mean, obviously we can revisit it.
Yep.
And, um, but it's also, um, it, it comes down to, once again, if businesses understand where we're coming from. Kind of like that, um, you know, here are the ground rules kind of thing.
Sure.
I always think that I, um, I probably give people like the benefit of the doubt too much, thinking that they're going to do the right thing. Because we've had this conversation, so why do you turn around and do like the exact opposite?
Sure.
I, I don't get that. Um, but it's, it's one of those things where, um, you know, hopefully it helps if we sit down and say, you know, here. Here's, here's what we need to do, or, um, and there was input from, you know, at the time that this was done, you know, they had different things. I know that a lot of business people don't show up when they can have their say about something. Um, I think like onesie twosies kinds of things, but yeah, to have that. So having something to look at and, and compare, sure, let's do it.
Sounds, sounds good.
So we'll make, oh, do we need to make a motion to recommend that?
No, I don't think so.
No, okay.
I think that it's more of just a discussion and getting your thoughts, but we're not making any formal recommendation to city council at the time, so this is good.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. Then, um, hold on a minute. Then we have the one that has to do with.
Parking.
What do you do for someone who is late?
No, I apologize by the time, my calendar had seven, is that the old meeting time?
Yeah, we changed it like, um, summer.
But I looked at it and then I started making dinner for my two kids, because my wife was at a open house for her school tonight. And then you called and I'm like.
Wake-up call.
Oh, no.
Sure, use the kids as an excuse.
Well, I, I bailed on my kids, I do. You're on your own, you can finish making it, but fortunately my daughter's capable, so.
Now, now I feel horrible.
I felt so bad, I'm like, why I saw that?
We got through signage, so.
You did signage, it's done?
We did signage, we're gonna.
No, it's not done.
It's not done, but the feedback was, is that they're, um, we're going to draft a kind of, uh, we're, the planning commission collectively, uh, is not for backlit box signs in itself. But is open at looking at potentially individually character, individual character backlit signing facing Highway twelve. Um, and depending on the policy and how it looks, we can have a bigger discussion on if it pertains only to Highway twelve, if it's in the downtown, if it's a gateway, but.
So we're going to bring back some language, yep.
Give, um, more options.
Yep.
Right.
People seem to think that they need more options, so.
Options.
We'll give them more options.
Okay.
So we'll do that, so this, then we're at, um, parking, parking space requirements. So again, um, staff.
All right, um, so this is, let me get to the right page here, so I know these numbers, um.
On three?
Let's see, my paper's got all mixed up here. Oh, yep, so, uh, we're looking at, um, we've granted three variances within the past three years relating to parking space Iowa standard. So right now it's at twenty feet for the depth and five, twenty-five feet for the drive aisle width. Um, and so, um, staff has seen a, you know, a standard, a typical standard, um, being a parking space depth with a minimum of a one and a half feet overhang, um, with eighteen feet. And a drive aisle with a twenty-four feet. So we are just looking at your feedback and pertains to changing that to what we've seen as a tip- typical standard.
Well, and all of, all of these, all of these three variances had to do with, um, Proto Lab. And so one of the questions that, and we've talked in planning commission through the years about parking a lot. And one of the questions that I had is, in doing this, if we do this, then can we make that for the whole, for any parking? Or are we saying, you know, because not everything has, um, the.
One and a half foot overhang?
Oh, yes, not everything has an overhang, so you have that, but is it for the whole?
It would be the whole city, and it would be with on one and a half foot overhang, eighteen foot, without it would be twenty.
Okay.
So this allows anything that's up against a, a curb, basically, to go to the eighteen, which is what we've done is, you know, traditionally with the Proto Lab.
Yeah.
So, and it would, it would encompass a whole city.
Is, is, is that, I can't remember why we went bigger, maybe because cars were bigger or something. But is, is this, are we putting ourselves, you know, into kind of the same situation where we went and changed everything because things had, you know, changed? Or is that kind of normal for?
This is the standard of practice, so I would say, and I don't, you know, twenty-four aisle width and eighteen-foot parking depth, parking stall depth is, I mean, is what you would design to as kind of conservative. I've seen as low as sixteen-foot spaces with a foot and a half overhang, or sixteen and a half foot spaces with a foot and a half overhang. So I, I think we, if we go eighteen and we go twenty-four, we're going to be right where everyone else is. And so, and, and it's what people design to, so anybody who draws this is going to say, that's what you should have. But it's plenty, it's plenty. So typically cars have that, you know, even big trucks have even more overhang from the wheels.
Yeah.
And people, if you have a curb, which we require, they pull all the way out. So they'll hit, you know, I mean, most people pull until they hit it, you know, and that's okay, because, right, then you got, you got the overhang. But then you'll have plenty, you know, plenty of space in the parking stalls. So I think it's the right, you know, we granted the variances and every time somebody comes in, it's like, yeah.
This doesn't feel right, collecting the fees for this, uh, it should be talked about in a, in a larger discussion like this, so.
Well, I'm, I'm okay, um, with, with doing it in particular, because I think for the whole, it would be nice to have something that is for the whole city. Um, and, um, I, I mean, I don't pull into something that I'm not comfortable. So if, if I saw something that was, you know, sixteen feet and I wasn't comfortable, I, I just, I don't park there. So I'm the kind of person that, you know, isn't going to try and jam.
Not going to risk it, hope for the best?
Uh, no.
You know, the other thing to think about, and I think we put that in the ordinance, but it's only, we're only talking about ninety-degree parking, um, spaces. So we have different provisions for angled parking, either forty-five or sixty, and we have different provisions for parallel. Those all, those will all remain the same. It's just the, the ninety degree, which is the typical space. And quite honestly, we've got a development that hopefully comes forward to the city here shortly in the Gateway District, um, down by the Vilmael property. And they're going to be designed to this standard, so we don't want them to have to do a variance for that. But, um, yeah, so this is just the ninety-degree parking.
What do you ladies think?
I'm okay with it, I mean, I, I think if that's a standard, that's when they're drawing up plans, that's what they're used to draw.
Yeah.
And we have way too much parking lot in the city anyway.
Yeah.
Sure, well, and if you think about what this does, I mean, in a typical.
It brings more.
Parking lot, yeah, it reduces, you know, you're talking about reducing on a double stall parking lot, you know, four or five feet times whatever the length of that parking is, goes back to green space, so it's a.
Yeah, that would make it look nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, then, um, um, we would make a, we would recommend again, like we did with the other one, that the wording, um, for that goes.
Yeah, so two things, I'm going to read, uh, Stefan's, uh, feedback on this, and then we can, uh, we'll have to do the public hearing too. Um, so he says, I approve of staff's recommended changes to parking stall dimensions. Twenty-foot stalls should only be required where you have a double row end-to-end parking in a larger parking lot and there's no opportunity for overhang.
And I, I'm, he, where, where he works or what he does, I mean, he's, well, he's literally gotten out the plans and.
Yeah, drawn out.
He draws, yeah.
So, um, I would, I would trust what he says, yeah, good. So then if we recommend, then you would bring the words.
So that, this would actually, um, your recommendation would be to go to city council with the.
Then we do have to make a motion.
On this one, we do need a recommendation.
Because of the simplicity of it.
Yep.
You need to do the public hearing.
You do.
Oh, that's right, um, I'll open and close the public hearing, um, for the, um, parking space dimensions at, um, six forty-five.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Perfect.
I have no idea why I can, I, I usually remember to open it, but forget to close it, so now I'm forgetting the whole thing.
There's so much public out there.
I know, I know, what do you have to say? Okay, so then I would make, um, we need a motion that recommends that, um, the, for the ninety-degree.
Yep, ninety-degree parking.
Parking, that it is as you recommend for the, um.
That works.
The, you know.
The, the depth and the width, yep.
And then the other stays the same?
Yep, we're not making, we're not recommending any other changes, yep.
The recommendation, or the, yeah, we're recommending that we approve the changes to ninety degrees, so we need a, a motion.
Make that motion, for a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Then this thing, then that next one has to do with, um, DAS. Which in, in.
Okay, DAS.
Computer, in computer ease is a whole different thing. I, I had to read this four times, I am not kidding you, to try and figure out what, what?
So, so there's, there's kind of a long version of this, which the city council has talked about. And then there's a shorter version of this, which the planning commission gets to talk about. I did include the memorandums from the league to try to explain the whole.
Was very helpful, um, I, I want to know what government agencies spent the money on this thing.
Uh, that, that's.
I'm teasing.
Wasn't it the league?
It's the league.
Private organization.
But, you know, I thought it was better written than I can, so what happened, and just quickly, in two thousand and seventeen legislature adopted, uh, legislation, new laws that pertain to these small cell facilities being permitted as basically a utility. And because then they were considering, considered a utility, they were allowed to be located in right-ofways.
Right.
Similar to any other utilities, phone lines, uh, pedestals, four phone lines, utility transformers, like electric transformers, things like that, which are permitted in, in right-ofways. Um, and are protected as permitted in right-ofways. Really what this is, um, the league, the League of Minnesota Cities got involved heavily after, uh, really private cell companies went to the legislature and started lobbying hard to get permission to put these in the right-ofway without having to pay for right-ofway, without having to permit.
I'm understanding better than.
So, and what I was explaining, what was explained to me by an attorney that I work with, who represents a ton of cities and is probably one of the foremost right-ofway, um, savvy attorneys, he, he does all kinds of right-ofway agreements. What he said is, Mark, it's, it's, it was Verizon wanting these things put up for the Super Bowl. And he goes, that's honestly where this all came from. And I said, oh, that makes sense. So that's what, that was his summary analysis of it. But, um, in any case, the legislature adopted it and gave utilities the ability to locate these within, uh, city-owned right-ofway on city-owned facilities. So light poles, um, if we had certain towers that already existed, we essentially couldn't restrict them, but we could permit them. And so with the ordinance and how it breaks down, there's kind of two things that cities are able to do to try to regulate these to the extent they can. So almost every city out there is going to go ahead and pass local ordinances to regulate these to the maximum amount that they're able to regulate, just because. And one, they, they want to make sure that they're done correctly, but, but, uh, two, there is some impact potential to properties and values and, and just things in the right-ofway if they're not, um, looked at by the city. So with the, with the way it breaks down, the city of Maple Plain has a right-of-way ordinance.
Yeah.
That ordinance is outside of zoning and subdivision, so it's not reviewed by the planning commission. It's adopted and then can be amended by council. So there's a portion that, uh, of this new legislation that we're going to regulate, utilizing a new permit process where we're going to, we can't reject, we can't deny, but we can say you have to pay us a fee. And you have to get a permit to put these facilities within our right-ofways. So they'll, they'll, the council's actually reviewing that language now, it was actually presented at the last workshop. And will consider an amendment to the right-ofway ordinance pertaining to this permitting and then fees associated with permitting. The por- portion then, that's kind of the second piece of these, is outside of the right-ofway, uh, ordinance, the city has the ability to essentially treat small cell facilities similar to large cellular towers, um, or other antenna facilities. For any, uh, any towers that would be located in residential districts. If it's industrial, or it's in, uh, office park, or it's downtown mixed-use, we don't have the ability to regulate. But if it's residential, we have the ability to regulate. So by regulation, what they gave us is we can require conditional use permit. So we can regulate use in residential zoning districts for new facilities. We can't regulate if somebody wants to locate on, say, a existing pole. But if they want to put up a new pole and they, and or put a new box in, or whatever the technology might be, then they'd have to come, not only go through the permitting process that's in the right-ofway, they'd have to go through land use process and, and apply for a condition use similar to large cells. But it's only residential property.
Okay, and, and.
Or right-ofway, I should say.
Right-ofway, and I'm, I was trying to, um, kind of wrap my head around, like, where, where in Maple Plain residential, so R one, R two?
Everything R one, R two.
Okay.
Or R three, R three.
R three, okay, so that's kind of what I thought. So where I live.
Yep.
Okay, there's the Akona building, there's the nursing home, there's the parks.
Yep.
So those would be spots, or the right-ofways at those spots?
So there's two things, where you live, you're on county right-ofway, so we can't regulate that, so we'd fall back to the county to regulate their, uh, right-ofway. But, um, I mean, if we go up to Maine, or we go anywhere in your neighborhood, even in front of Haven Homes.
Yeah.
That's all zoned R one. And so any, anything in the right-ofway there, any light pole, any utility pole, um, anything in the right-ofway itself on the ground, if they came in and wanted to locate one of these small cell, and you saw a picture in the packet. They come in all kinds of shapes and sizes though, but generally they are small cell, and you can see the dimensions that we're talking about in the definition, um, no more than six cubic feet in volume. So, and I think there was, isn't there one other dimension, twenty cubic?
Is aggregate in one way?
Yeah.
But they couldn't, could they do it like the right-ofway that goes through like my backyard?
No.
Or, um, and, and.
No.
Part of the, I, I understand, I think there's part of me that thinks it's a good thing, because you should know what's going on. And, and I don't like people taking advantage of cities. And then I know it's small, but I think that if you're going to park your stuff on our property, then you should pay for it. So that, that part is good, but I started wondering like, you know, how much, or, you know, is it something that, are we anticipating that there's going to be a lot of stuff?
No. No, I, no, I mean, as Mark mentioned, this was primarily for Verizon and the Super Bowl in Minneapolis, but because of the lobbying that took place with Verizon, it's now become a statewide mandate. Um, it could in the future happen if another carrier, now, here in Maple Plain, we already have T-Mobile and Verizon on large cell structures. So it seems unlikely at this time, given some of the updates that have been made, that, um, that those companies, those providers would be looking to do any small cell, just because we're not a very large city to begin with. Um, now that doesn't necessarily mean that someone like, um, Sprint could come through here and start putting up small cell wireless, they could, that's an option. Um, down the line potentially.
Um, down the line, potentially, it, I don't know how far down the line with all this happening, Verizon, I guess, could put small cell in these right-ofways and then shoot it from their, from the water tower at the industrial site where they're at to speed up the process, that could happen too as well. So, right now, are we aware of anyone trying to do this in the town? No. Um, but we have to, uh.
It, it could, as technology advances.
It could.
I've heard that the five G technology stuff that's gonna come out may utilize or start to, um, start to implement some of this technology and so then maybe we could start to see it, you know, where people. I mean, the one thing I think about when I first got involved with some of the discussion on this legislation was, man, I mean, it would be a lot cheaper for these companies who pay huge money for these cell tower leases to come in and start sticking these things up in free right-ofway. Now, cities are gonna permit them and then they're gonna charge them, but I wonder if that fee at some level isn't cheaper than.
Cheaper than what they're doing.
What they're doing out otherwise. So maybe they'll try to advance this technology to start to.
Is there, is there, um, a reason why it was that, why we're considering a conditional use permit versus a temporary use permit?
The conditional use versus the interim use, I think, yeah, I think it gave us, I think that they'd want it memorialized if we were going to, you know, if they were gonna invest infrastructure. And when I was looking at, I don't think there's good end dates or horizon dates on the use of these. I don't know that there's a lifespan that we could, you know, clearly define. So if by default, it's gonna go to the same thing as a large cell, um, which is that conditional use.
Well, and I also got the impression that, um, a, a city, not that I'm recommending or suggesting this, but that a city can't necessarily say, "No, not at all."
We have no ability to say no.
Right, okay, then I read that right. One of the other points that, um, as I was going through and doing this is, um, I, um, it was in the League of Minnesota Cities, kinda thing. When y'all are doing this with, with people, um, or with companies on their page four, where it says, "Cities can request proof of compliance with the FCC rules," or, that, that would be a part of the perm, of the COP that, um, cause I think that when, um, it wasn't too long ago that we did the big towers, um, over by the, um, you know.
By Ferguson, Caswell.
Yes, thank you. Um, where, you know, I'd like to trust people, but I think you should always ask and kinda have, that's a part of the permit that, you know, we said, and then you find something out that really wasn't so, kinda thing. So all of the checks and balances that you might have, I, you know, really.
Right, so.
Go ahead.
So I think that's right. We, I mean, so we're gonna define it based on state statutory definition of these facilities? And then we're only talking land use, um, whereas the right-ofway ordinance speaks more to the faci- what the facilities have to comply to. I'd, I'd have to go back in like the statute language, cause, um, it's defined in state statute. It, I don't know on that FCC compliance. I don't know what, I don't know how these comply. It's, it's a good question, I don't know the answer to that. It's something that we could confirm with the attorney though, but, um, the city attorney, you know, reviewed this and kinda said, "This is the language that the league is proposing you use," and so I, you know, propose to use this, so.
Yeah, but, uh, well.
That's a good question. I, I don't know. I mean, I, I presume in this, in a, in the statutory language, it addresses it, but, yeah. I'll, I'll look.
Did anybody else have questions or opinions or wonders?
I would assume that in most cases, they would put it already on an existing pole.
I, I mean, certainly, there's a benefit, I think, to the company in terms of financial means to, there's an existing, yeah, utility pole, any, you know, type of structure there in the right-ofway that they can use. They're gonna do that.
I would say maybe in a city that had buried all their lines, it might be.
Correct.
But here we have poles everywhere.
Yes.
So we could end up with some of the facilities, but what we won't end up with, at least in the residential areas, we have the ability to restrict or regulate what, what they have to do. And, um, one of the big questions for planners that I've talked to a lot of my attorney.